All right, well, I'll go ahead and call the board of this meeting of the Climate Action Resilience Committee, the Blue Pack Council. It is Monday, April first, 2/24, 5:30, 6:00 PM. And I'll just say, may I, if I were to attend this, Matt Clarity, Chair of the Committee?
Sydney Zulek, Councilwoman District Six.
Hopey Southberg, District Three.
Howard, Councilwoman Gress, as well, we're joined by Ash Trulev, Deputy City Attorney, and Suzy McGowan, Deputy.
Chief Deputy Chief.
Chief Deputy.
Deputy City Attorney.
Deputy.
Okay. So, we have, oh, also, note, the fourth committee member is Councilwoman Day Roloff. For, you let us know that he is under the weather and plans to join via Zoom, but also had a conflict with the beginning portion of this meeting. So we expect him to join us remotely at some point. And so, we have a agenda for this evening's meeting. This is our second meeting of the year with the newly constituted committee. And our cadence that we establish is to meet monthly. And our agenda for the evening includes updates from committee members, Duke Energy, Energy Resource Planning Process, the proposed actions, proposed actions around off-road gas car equipment, discussion of committee member climate action plan priorities for 2024, public comment, initial scheduling, and endowment. There was one, I paused there because there was one item that I might have had as a sub bullet when we communicated to Ash, that I didn't see on the agenda, that I wanted to make sure I was exhausted in covering. Or maybe I just failed in concluding that. The item that I wanted to include, but I didn't, sorry, that's all my fault, was some specific updates on assignments that various committee members have related to the climate action body of work. So I attended the city's climate action team meetings, which are monthly, or bi- I guess. I'm on the steering committee of Project Forty-Six, which is a regional collaborative, and Dave is on the, our seat on the Commission on Sustainability, which is also a charge to kind of help implement the energy climate action plan. I'd like to build faith into future agendas for update on those three fronts. And, yeah, I guess I, sorry, Ash, am I going to you? I noted this in like a parenthetical, not as part of the agenda. So, that's on me, just to clarify. So, I can give those couple of updates on the two things that I tend to. First was Project Forty-Six, a meeting that happened in, earlier in March. So, just to refresh, Project Forty-Six is a regional climate collaborative initiated in partnership between Mayor's Lennep, Jim Lennep of Columbus, and John Hamilton of Bloomington. Kicked off in late 2022, and then into 2023, mid-2023, started sort of having a steering committee to form the priorities and approach. That's still honestly in the early days of like developing its, its structure. It's a public-private sector collaborative, so Cummins is a member, IU Health, IU through its government, Government Relations Office joins. Also, the town of Nashville, the town manager has, has joined, and Nashville has signed on. So the three cities or towns, Bloomington, Nashville, and Columbus have all formally joined the collaborative and committed resources to it. In the form of a small amount per capita that we, that we contribute essentially to fund the initiative, trying to bring in private sector funding as well. Cummins has made a donation to help support some initial contracting of services with a consultant partner who does, who supports climate collaborative efforts in a variety of jurisdictions throughout the country. One of the major first steps here is to develop governance documents around like how this thing will actually be run and what the priorities are. There's already been some early progress on leveraging the cross-jurisdictional, cross-sectoral collaborative for potential benefits for Bloomington and our area. In particular, the state is producing a climate action plan through the federal Climate Pollution Reduction Grant Program. And Sean Mia, our Assistant Director of Sustainability, has engaged IDAM and the state on that topic. And we were written into their proposal as a beneficiary of some of the funds that will come from the federal government. So we're still learning more about that, but we have priority actions for our area as the Project Forty-Six goes way in on. In terms of your area, yeah.
Do you know how aligned the state's plan is going to be of ours?
I think, so I saw, I'll give feedback on kind of a subset of actions that the state was considering for submission. I think my short take is, this is actually surprisingly successful of the funding provided by the federal government through the Pollution Reduction Act to give money to states, you know, to develop these plans. And some states don't have plans, like Indiana. And so we contracted with like, you know, IDAM is heading it, but they actually shopped it out to a consultant to develop the plan. Everything I saw was, I would say, legitimate, you know, the type of things that would fit within or align with our climate action plan. Like, I don't think it's being co-opted, I guess, in any way. We'll see what the final version ends up looking like, but it's kind of one of these things where it's like, from the state's perspective, free money, you know, and is yet, or policy actually shaping what the states do, and then hopefully, resources that actually flow to us. So, yeah, it's kind of early days, again, trying to establish governance structures essentially, and learn a little more about regional climate collaborative models and successes elsewhere, and define what success looks like for us. I think there was alignment around trying to get some early wins on the board in terms of accessing resources and bringing them to our communities to demonstrate the benefits and the ways that a collaborative like this can be used. We do have a new mayor in Columbus as well. Her name is escaping me, Verda, Verden, I think, is, let me see what I have here. I'm sorry, I can't. But, yes, again, the new mayor of Columbus has.
Mary Verden.
Thank you, Mary Verden, yeah. You know, attended some of the meetings last year and is broadly bought in. And I think, you know, I've met with Mayor Thompson a time or two about it, before and after she took office. And, you know, generally positive in terms of moving forward and thinking, you know, where it could head. Some things I'd like to see out of it are. If there are areas of focus, what actually we want to try to accomplish, I think there's some things that make a lot of sense in a cross-sectoral and regional collaborative, things like workforce development, things like, you know, water, watershed management that crosses this, this area. I think engagement with entities that interact with all of us, like Duke Energy, or perhaps the new Indiana Green Bank, which Alex Crowley is, is heading up, makes some sense. And then finally, you know, I think I'd like to see some level of commitment around shared goals and targets. We, of course, have a mission reduction target set for us. Cummins is another example of an entity that has explicit mission reduction targets. Some larger corporate entities do, but getting broader, you know, obviously IU does as well now with its climate action plans. So getting broader buy-in across sectors and from, you know, representative, you know, groups and organizations, community foundations, that kind of thing, around shared goals seems helpful to me, but we'll see how viable that is. I mean, I'm not sure, you know, that city of Columbus, for instance, would necessarily buy into those targets. So there's a governance committee, subcommittee meeting on Thursday this week that I volunteered to help support as we move this thing forward. The steering committee is supposed to meet quarterly, and then there's going to be access to different subcommittee type opportunities. And potentially other opportunities to bring in other stakeholders besides this group as we move forward. But that's the status update. I'm happy to answer questions, but I would feel all.
Dave is talking.
Hi, Dave, hello.
Can I hear me?
Welcome.
Yes.
We can. I was just, I had, we had gone over the agenda for this evening, as well as gotten into our first couple of items. Under the category of committee member updates, I shared that I wanted to hold space as a general standing agenda item for updates specific to a few of the climate-related engagements outside this committee. So the Climate Action Team, which is the internal group at City Hall, meets every other month. Project Forty-Six, the Regional Climate Collaborative, and then also the Commission on Sustainability, which, of course, you are our appointment too. And so I just shared some updates on Project Forty-Six and where we are with that, in particular, developing some governance structures and priorities as we kind of manage this transition to new mayors. One more thing to mention about that is that the county has not yet gotten involved. I think the county council passed a resolution of support, commissioners have not. I learned that maybe part of that was that they were not invited to be part of this steering committee, which seems like, if they're a funding entity, they should be. So I was unaware of that until just recently, and that might have been some friction, some optimistic that we can reimburse the county, you know, new administration in the term, and, you know, potentially get them involved. I know Mayor Thompson mentioned she spoke with one of the commissioners about it, and their, their hesitancy is a little bit around kind of knowing what the value is and what is the benefit for them. So, that's it on Project Forty-Six. The Climate Action Team met in February was the last meeting. It was kind of the first meeting, I think, for the new administrations, which is kind of a general orienting to the process of, of shared updates from the department heads who were able to join. It's kind of meant to be a process and a space for department heads and/or the person in the department tasked with leading their climate work to have some accountability and share updates around their actions, their components of the plan that they're responsible for and what they're driving forward. So, Public Works, obviously, Economic and Sustainable Development, Utilities, Planning, all tend to have relevant updates, some others. One thing that came out of this last one was the utilities is scoping a new building at the Winston Thomas site for a new service center. And a conversation around the need for any new facilities built in the city to have, to be, you know, to see if there are fossil fuels, to be discounted from fossil fuels, even if they're not applying, supplying 100% of their own renewable energy on-site yet. Eventually, the grid will be 100% renewable, very close to it, so it's important not to connect our, our building together, and we're building new. So that was brought up, and I think shared on the utilities context, and I can part with the utility service board meeting last week. That's the approach they intend to take with that building. They've been given a green light to go to 50% design, and then that can come back to the administration for further guidance on overall capital availability and project priorities. But that's where that stands.
Excellent question.
Yeah, you have no questions, so yes.
What are some of the strategies that they're using to become like part of the true?
So, the high level for like a building, like a building would be to be all electric and to have all the electricity supplied by renewable energy. Like, it's that, it's truly that simple. You want to invest in an efficient building, of course, as well, and just the green building ordinance, which requires will be silver for new building. New buildings are ready, so they're highly energy efficient. The point of not connecting to fossil fuel gas or space and water heating is to go with a more efficient electric instead, or ground source geothermal, which is renewable, and then the electric. We can supply verona on-site through on-site solar energy, and then again, over time, the grid itself will be much more, it's already in fact, much cleaner than burning gas for heating. So that's the basic strategy, electrification, and plus renewables. That's maybe the biggest update. I don't need to share, you know, the full logic of the climate action team necessarily, but I wanted to share a little bit about that process and an update there. I'll pause for any questions, then I can go to Dave, or, oh, Dave, go ahead, I see.
Yeah, I had a question about the facility at Winston Thomas. Is this going to be, and I assume we've got, they're going, they're going to do highly standard construction.
Yes.
So, silver, if not gold?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Yeah, confirmed, silver is required, and that was confirmed at the utility service board meeting last time. And the folks there, there's a subcommittee that's working very actively on the design from the board and engaging with the staff. And they said they, they're scoping gold, they're seeing if they can do gold. So they're, they've got it in their, their sights, not committed yet, but they're looking into that possibility, and we'll cost additionally.
Mm-hmm, okay. Regarding sustainability, there's, nothing really directly related to climate. There's a focus on local food and expanding chicken flocks that might come to us at some point soon. So we might want to have a discussion about that. I don't know if this is the place to do it, but doubling, doubling the size of chicken flocks in the city.
Thank you for the update, that's helpful.
Dave, do you, have you talked to Isabel about the chicken flock thing?
Just say again, I'm sorry.
Have you talked to Isabel about the chicken flock thing?
I haven't, I haven't, I'll do that.
Okay, I just feel like I remember something about, that being something that at some point maybe she was interested in. And is maybe on, on a list that she has, so I want to know if she's done active work on it or not.
It was, it was on the list for the last council, and we never got to it. It was, I don't know if it was doubling the flock, but it was, it was expanding it. And so I'll, I'll be sure to talk to her about it, yep, thank you for that, hope.
Yeah, because I feel like that just got mentioned at the scheduling meeting, that's like, because it was something that I saw. I'm trying to look at it now to see whether.
Yeah, and that actually wasn't hiding my work on last year, and the sponsor decided to not pursue it, so that would be close to the finish line. But it wasn't, it wasn't doubling, it's increasing the size based on, I think, plot size. So, yeah, I can, I can review this though, folks, on getting a, you know, looking at the current draft I did last year, updating this.
I mean, lot size would make sense, I mean, at, at some point, maybe we can circle back to what the difference would be in terms of size and like animal safety?
Yeah, I had a conversation of course, last year, but I had a conversation with Purple Saturday, and more about hair control about it, and it was kind of a, you know, a question of if the person has free range space, should they be able to have more birds? You know, the question really came down to, is it going to be based on how big the lot is, or how much space they have within it? You know, and still worry, people about restrictions of how far it is from being living lots and all of that. But the question kind of came down to, if you have space, you have the birds versus if it doesn't fall into this kind of right line of here's this lot for this size, here's this spot for this size.
Yeah, thank you.
As luck would have it, bird flu is back in the news.
I saw that today, yeah.
Yeah, although the intermediary is, are cows, usually enough, yeah, but anyway.
All good on the V pass update? Okay, yeah, thank you, Dave. So next item I have on here was Duke Energy Integrated Resource Planning Process. So, a little bit of background, all the investor and utilities in the state, the electric utilities are required to file these integrated resource plans that look, you know, something like 20 years or so in the future, and show their, their resource planning, what's like, how are they anticipating demand will go in our service territory? What resources, what mix of fuel sources and power plants and energy efficiency do they intend to use to meet that demand? For instance, if it's growing, or if they're going to retire some asset, what are they replacing with? So this is their, the state-defined process for longer planning, you know, for the utilities essentially.
Where can I find that?
This is linked, actually not the slide deck, but the landing page, the Integrated Resource Plan was linked in the agenda.
Here on that.
Yeah, I think if you.
Meeting, meeting one slide.
Meeting one slide, exactly, at the bottom of that page.
I had just looked it up.
So this has just gotten underway, it happens every three years, it happened in 2021. The city did not engage directly in that process in 2021, I kind of loosely followed it. I would imagine that Duke is aware of, and other municipalities net zero 2050 goals. In fact, they have a net zero 2050 goal themselves as a utility that spans seven states of service, and even more in terms of their generation assets. Even so, folks at City's Action Coalition, we heard from last week, and other climate environmental advocates in the state generally have concluded that Duke is not moving fast enough in their plans to meet what they say their goals are, nor what our goals are. And I wanted to raise the possibility of the city government and, you know, us being kind of a coordinating and logical, logical coordinating entity engaging Duke Energy in some way on this process. I know Isabel, Pete Von Smith, attended the, the first meeting, which was in February. I didn't make it to that myself, but I did reach out to folks at Silver, Silver, you know, the neighbors, City's Action Coalition, Sierra Club, and, or Turner DIA, to hear what they're doing on this, how they're engaging on the, planning to engage on the Duke IRP. Again, kind of with the idea of the, some potential coordination, could be something that, like Project Forty-Six, is a climate collaborative served by Duke Energy across that space. There are certainly others in Duke Energy's service territory directly that have similar climate goals as we do. Indiana University is another, but for reasons I doubt they'd be willing to engage, but as technical matter, they do have, you know, goals aligned with our own. And so, yeah, I just wanted to raise this possibility and get the committee's thoughts around whether we'd like to formally engage in some, in some way. That might take the form of, I mean, probably take the form of, obviously, meetings and give feedback on things, but possibly the form of a, a resolution or motion in council, or some other letter, you know, some other form of engagement, ultimately. Again, separate than we, I think, are already engaged in the past. I would also invite Councilman Roloff to share any insights that I may not be aware of about past engagement on the Integrated Resource Planning Process, particularly earlier. So with that, great to go, I'll look into this session.
Did you talk to the Roloff?
I, I really don't have any insight or anything to share on, on the engagement with Duke. But I think it's an excellent idea, and, you know, clearly, the community would, would like to expand green, green power options. And so, it should be a feather in their cap if they would like to work with the city. So, what's, what's your experience with, with them, Matt? Do they seem interested in engagement, or is this sort of a, you know, well, let's leave it at that, are they interested?
You know, they're, so they're, the process steps were mandated, or regulatory mandated, one of the two or both. In terms of our engagement with them, I think historically, we've been pretty, like, my, my feel, or my reading from the last administration, and, you know, working with Alex Crowley and Lauren Clements primarily on this stuff, was that they, they kept it pretty like light-hand. They didn't want to sour relations, you know, by pushing too hard on Duke to do more. I think there's a delicate balance to walk of like staying a respected and good partner at the same time, of asking for, you know, what we'd like to see. I think they, I know there was some engagement, I'm not sure whether this ever went anywhere, I remember talking to Deputy Mayor Renaisen about it, around Duke trying some pilot-type projects in our area around more like utility scale renewables near Bloomington with the power explicitly dedicated for our power supply and sort of credited in that way. You know, if we're looking at the possibility of piloting things, certain types of energy, efficiency programs, or community solar, you know, which is not actually a thing in Indiana, you know, I think we're, by engaging them in this way, we're kind of prime candidates for something like that. I have engaged along with Sean Mia with, with their Government Relations person for our area, it was Erwin is her name, we probably, I think we all get emails from her from time to time. And we had a good meeting in, in maybe December, including about off-road, off-road gas car equipment, which we'll get to momentarily. So, yeah, I think, you know, we, we've tried engaging in the IRP before, it seems to me worthwhile. My knowledge generally about either these processes or rate cases that happen at the utility regulatory commission and engaging on those is that often it leads to compromises or, you know, stipulations of some kind. It's the way that organizations like City's Action Coalition, you know, who often kind of win some sort of concessions through a formal stipulation agreement of some kind, where the, the commission says, yeah, meet these stakeholders in the middle on X. And so I think it's done, you know, well, I think there's potential for progress. And again, we haven't really tried it before, this only comes along over three years, it seems to me like a worthwhile thing to, you know, capacity-allowing to engage in.
I agree, I think, um, Ms. Roloff, pretty right, because we're both on the, we both sort of agree with business moving, right? So we see each other pretty frequently, so I think she would be more than willing to, at least sit down and thought like, some shifts that Duke can make to be more.
Sure.
I, I don't have anything valuable to add.
Are you just willing?
Yes.
Of engaging in it?
Yeah.
Perhaps, I mean, we could reach out.
I don't think that I have the bandwidth myself to do that.
Yeah.
But if somebody else has the bandwidth to do that, that would be marvelous.
I'll actually see Liz twice this week. I'm sending back a sent here table for the Chamber Local Government election, and I think the volunteer in Spain, both were open on Friday. So they talked a very hard time to do that.
Yeah, would you mind asking her, or letting her know that we're interested in engaging with Duke Energy around our Integrated Resource Planning Process? And ask her like, what are the next step would be for that? Like, I mean, I would imagine that she could, we're not, any, any random customer stakeholder, of course, we are a, a city government representing, you know, 800,000 people. And so maybe they'd be willing to have like a meeting with, I don't know, some folks to be in the process, something like that. I don't know, I mean, just open it up to see what they think, the best way to engage out, but let them know that you're there, we're interested and, and want to engage in the process.
Please, let me look at what exactly she's, please don't judge me, everyone, but looking at my phone. I thought she said that she would introduce me to their vice president, their vice president of government and community relations.
Okay.
And her state president, who will be there, the volunteer.
Yeah.
On Friday, so we can pitch that to them.
We'll see about Friday, okay?
I, it's, oh. I just went down to ask her about.
You said it was Popeyes?
No, New Hope or.
Oh, New Hope.
Oh, no, you did say Popeyes, I'm sorry.
You did say Popeyes. I'm really good. It's a whole place.
Okay.
A new Popeyes.
Building a pollinator garden for the nine ships.
Lovely, I didn't see that, I was.
Lovely, perfect, okay.
Hang out.
I will sadly be working. Okay, so we're in agreement that we would like to explore next steps of how to engage with Duke Energy on the, the Integrated Resource Plan that comes to me for. Does that sound okay, Dave, if you'd like?
Will you send me the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds good. Matt, in your experience, do they, so I came across a number that the amount of electricity proportion, proportionally in Indiana is 53% coal. And I think, I don't know to what chair Duke is responsible. I remember they built that huge IGCC plant in Edward, Edward's Port. That was, it was purported to be cleaner burning coal, it was synthetic gas, synthetic gas. But I think, I mean, to me, as a Hoosier and a local representative, the main thing is, can we get the customers off coal? You know, and then green energy options would be another aim. And then, do they put any money toward sequestration? So, you know, would they buy trees that we, you know, that we, we could find a place for in the community? Things like that.
Got it.
I, I don't know, you've, you've interfaced with them, right? So you, you.
Yeah, yeah, some, I, I think they're probably responsible for a considerable share, maybe more than their fair share of the whole generation. I think a lot of these Integrated Resource Planning Processes, one of the major issues that tends to come to the fore is the retired, planned retirement date of the coal plants. So you hear that from NSCO and AES, you know, which just permitted to phase out its coal plants, and, and the other major investor in utilities in Indiana, same, same basic question. I think Duke is generally lagged behind some of those others in their phase-out timelines and plans. I'm, I'm sure that issue will, will come to the fore, and I agree with you that. Uh, in their phase out timelines and plans. I'm I'm sure that issue will will come to the fore. And I agree with you that. Uh, there are additional local air pollution and environmental pollution layers of coal specifically beyond the climate impact. Uh, that make it especially a dirty source. And then the other kind of major question becomes. Uh, pacing of gas versus wind and solar to replace that. Especially in the context of for the first time in decades, anticipated growing demand through electric vehicles, uh, building electrification and. You know, things like data centers and other, uh, you know, large energy users. Um, and so that, so, yeah, it's a pretty major issues at stake. I think. I'm probably doing very much advocates for investing in energy efficiency as a resource. Uh, we used to have a state mandate for that. Uh, exchange between our big channels. But was repealed under Pence. Um, so everything they do is voluntary. So that's where I think advocating, you know, for for higher targets on efficiency. Uh, becomes a benefit, especially if it can be the types of efficiency programs to help folks to start with bigger bills, uh, you know, control resident benefits. Um, and great idea about carbon sinks as well. I don't know what types of carbon sequestration are engaged in, whether natural, you know, or engaging in other. Uh, capture, you know, exploration projects or what, but I think that's another good um. Yeah, topic that, you know, to take up with them and and learn about. And so, yeah, I think those are all good ideas.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for that. I think there's definitely an opportunity of reciprocal self-interest here. So I'm all for it.
Yeah. Sounds good. Okay. Well, Sid, uh, thank you so much for taking points on uh first uh question, Liz Irwin. And, yeah, I'm happy to. Follow up after that conversation and see what the next step is. Um, are we going to move on to the next item?
Yeah.
Okay, so proposed actions regarding off-road gas power equipment. Um, we have, you know, a couple of um. Should I define it? Probably a couple of several actions in the budget actually planned related to this. Um, they are transportation and land use section, strategy TO one dash I. Um, in brief, uh, there are three strategies outlined. One is a a city policy to replace our off-road. Gas power equipment plus encourage county, school, district, uh, and Indiana university to develop and implement their own plans and policies. Two is an incentive program to convert lawn equipment to uh electric, including the possibility of coordination with Duke Energy. Uh, to open up our rebates or other opportunities. And the three is an actual uh gas powered lawn equipment phase out ordinance. Uh, requiring, uh, you know, transition uh community wide. So. We spent most of last, most of this committee's focus last year really on these three actions uh and driving them forward. And uh, we we. I think reached a more or less a a consensus point like last year on where we wanted it ahead. And so my goal for this item. Today was to kind of, in the context of those three actions and the committee's past work, talk about kind of where we landed. It does cover those three actions and some. It it addresses all of them. Uh, and then kind of seek alignment uh among this committee, uh, the four of us to kind of take those next steps. Um, so I can dive in on that. Are there any questions before um? Uh, and and customer morale, you're not visible on screen because we've got that pulled up. So please just speak up. I won't see your hand if you raise it.
Okay.
So, uh. I'll, we're we're at where we landed. Um, so I'll just take these one at a time with three actions. Uh, so the city policy. Uh, we we are very actively replacing almost all gas power equipment um with, you know, that's feasible with with uh electric alternatives. These seconds might be like construction equipment as off-road equipment, but when it comes to mowers, blowers, chainsaws, spring trimmers. All that kind of stuff, we're very actively doing that in public works, um, and utilities and uh parks. Um, parks especially has really been driving that forward. Um, I think the thing to do is to solidify it, like a drop a drop dead date for maybe different types of equipment. In turn, then actually codifying it to formalize a city policy. Uh, because right now it's just sort of been like, well, we'll we'll. Make an assessment about uh what funding is available, what the replacement cost is and the operational savings compared to the, you know, the. The conventional and and with like things like zero turn mowers, like actually testing it out, making sure it can do the job if it's needed. Overall, that has been going very well. That's one of the things Tim Street's been reporting out of the kind of action team meetings. So they're well on their way. I think the thing to do again is get um. Uh, a commitment that the different departments who have equipment feel like they can uh meet um and, you know, codify that to make sure it gets done. Um, the funding for climate action that was in the economic development that increases and helping to drive this forward. Uh, so and then and then the other component of this first action is to encourage county, school, district, Indiana university to develop and implement their own policies. We have talked about that in this committee before. Uh, we've actually met with Jessica Davis, who heads this work at IU. Um, I don't think we've talked with county government or the MCCSC, but, you know, we can and should. Um, and so, yeah, that encouraging them to do the same. I mean, it could be. Asking them to join us in a commitment around a shared timeline or failing that, you know, just to be aware of issue, trying to develop their own phase out timelines. So all pause there. That was kind of our conclusion on action one. Uh, questions or how folks feel about that?
Could you ask like um Adam and Jim about just like what are reasonable timelines like?
Yeah.
How can we like publicly commit to that date, write the solution or?
Well, I'm good at creating ordinance to require requiring a phase out timeline.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, as we develop, I'll just let you come out of this committee. I think that makes a lot of sense. And then, yeah, we can organize a group and.
Matt, did we have staff? Uh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, it's good.
Okay, um, well, either us or staff are both reach out to Parks and Parks and Rec are the vast majority, right, of?
Yeah.
This lawn equipment and maybe utilities and maybe public works has some, I don't know. Um, but find find out what their trajectory is. I mean, can can we get there within? You know, by January first of twenty twenty-six or something?
Sure.
And if they say, sure, we can do that, then we can codify that and make sure.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds good. I'm happy to spearhead that uh in conjunction with staff um to actually, we we have, they were part of the undertaking. A lot of this stuff kind of. Is subject to some uh pause, pausing with staff conditions. Uh, but I remember under Alex Crowley and Lauren Clements, I remember they were. In the process of kind of getting a comprehensive inventory of the equipment. And so, yeah, getting an update on that and the projected timelines, if it's different for different types of equipment. The other piece I wanted to suggest needs to be part of policy two is the fact that we actually contract out a fair amount of the parks uh landscaping work. Um, and so making that a condition of uh our contracted work as well, then we actually affect the marketplace and then make sure that we're not just, you know, outsourcing.
That's great. That's great. That would leverage more, yeah, by having that, yeah, as a standard.
Mm-hmm.
We can do that for a reward ones required?
Yeah, yeah, we should be able to do. I mean, it's. Uh, we don't need to open it up to, it's it's within our power to choose who we want to contract with and why. Uh, so it's a city aberration issue. And, yeah, we should be able to directly executive uh policy guidelines around those things.
Great.
Um, but, yeah, we're well prepared for it.
Yeah, I can I can look more into it. I. Just off the offside, I have received immediate issues with that.
Um, and then, yeah, there's the county, there's the CFC, IU piece, athletic policy. Um.
We could take a step further and say that we're not partnering with any other bodies and. Like any other legal bodies unless we're using. Just saying.
Yeah.
Very many things, yeah.
Uh, but I, I.
We can keep that in our back pocket.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh.
Um, I'm in favor of codifying that and making those gold dates as long as it doesn't, but undo or to win a share on our departments, yeah.
Yeah.
I know it's like meeting them first.
Yeah.
Right, even writing your own.
Yeah, it's your obligation, you know.
Capable of doing that.
Mm-hmm. And of course, it becomes a little bit of a question of of resourcing. Let's say their default uh replace a failure timeline will get them, get it done in twenty twenty-nine. You know, maybe you can have them run a couple of accident areas. What about twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-seven? And how much of it, and then just all surroundings, have everybody retired and put the equipment essentially.
Yeah, I mean, I think that kind of ties back into like the budgeting for outcomes and making sure that in August when our heads are asking for us or some money that we're.
Sure.
Advancing our action wins.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, okay, so I'm going to move on to the second action because you're having an incentives program. incentives. This is also something we talked about extensively last year and ultimately agree that we should move forward on. It's very much within our power. Um, the the sustainability, um, economic sustainability department has about one hundred and six million dedicated to. Climate action plan implementation within their department, and that is largely within Shawn Mia, you know, subject to uh. Jamie Smith's approval, um, and the mayor's signature, uh, largely within their purview to shape, of course, and 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 across different programmatic things that they're trying to drive forward. This isn't something they've done yet, but I think, you know, this, I mean, this is maybe requesting next time we need to stop next month. Uh, that they uh start to scope a a rebate program. We, Sean Sean did engage in this a little bit uh last year and kind of looked at some. You know, what are price differentials between equipment? Are things possible? Kind of what's a reasonable rebate amount? We've just done this recently through their department with the e-bikes. Um, rebates, which I know is, you know, uh, they're figuring it out, but um, I think a well-crafted rebate program can go a long way. Maybe it's two-tiered for, um, you know. Uh, lowering time and everything and and no, you know, no qualification for it here yet. Uh, and I actually did find another utility, uh, uh, in the course of my day job that does offer these types of rebates. There was a municipal utility that offers. Like offering gas car equipment rebates. If we were global searching, we might be able to actually uh find some places that have done this. Um, we did also talk to Duke Energy, which has contemplated in the action. Um, I think that Sean and I, Liz Irwin, like last year, she looked into it further for us. They don't really have. A any any programs that were well suited to them providing rebates in this particular context. Uh, so it doesn't seem, although although we did have one um. Kind of community program of some kind that Sean did write an application for, apply for with this possible use. Um, I'm not sure if she's heard back on that. So we did try to engage Duke about something we spoke or engage with a program and we'll see where that lands. But I have a feeling. It will probably be us providing some level of resources for a rebate program to try to accelerate equipment uh transition. Um, so, yeah.
Was that program envisioned just residential or for commercial users as well, or was that still part of the discussion?
I think we talked about last month that like it was really expensive for commercials to switch over.
I think it's that what we showed a cost comparison up there, that the small, the the larger the mower got, the more expensive the electric version got in. But the smaller ones were similar.
Yeah.
But that's, you know.
Yeah.
It's about who we're going to provide that kind of financial assistance to.
Right. I I think I anticipated a a residential only program to start, uh, maybe something we explore on the commercial side and eventually. Um, or find other ways to incentivize commercial entities. Like maybe we actually have a, you know, uh. Bloomington certified, Bloomington adjusted, you know, uh, green uh landscape of businesses and maybe being electric is a requirement of that, you know. And and we actually, as part of our sustainability programming page, like highlights certain entities, we've talked about that in the context of green business and other things. So that could be a, you know, step, but.
I will respond to that.
This kind of starts to fall into more programmatic side of things too, in order we can probably, you know, uh, direct staff and then divert them to. Um, to develop the the details, uh, maybe with some level of consultation with the committee, but I. Uh, Dave, that that catch around that, uh, all right, as far as where we landed last year.
Yeah, yeah, perfectly, Matt. You 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 got it all. Um, I was just wondering about, besides the monetary incentive. It would be nice if we if the we could explore swapping them out. In other words, that they would surrender their gas powered for a a super cheap electric. That way we get them out of circulation. Now.
Yeah.
That's a little bit more complicated because then we'd have to dispose of them and all that, but.
Mm-hmm.
But we would, it would prove to be more effective, I think.
Yeah.
Don't you think?
Yeah. I'm with you. Yeah, all for that. And and, you know, of course, you might be some people who don't have the equipment and they just attach to that or something, you know, that's fine. But but, yeah, I agree with you that a swap out or, you know, replacement program is a great way to structure it.
Good.
Um, any other questions? Or we have alignment on that as well? It'll be something for further discussion, of course, with staff next month, so.
Mm-hmm.
But would you feel okay about that?
Yeah.
Okay, and so the third action here uh is the, you know, the the one we spent a lot of time thinking about, which is. Do we have the authority uh and appetite to try a, you know, mandated uh phase out timeline for different types of gas powered lawn equipment? Um, where we then, you know, be engaged with, sorry, Indiana Indiana municipalities and city legal, um, Ash did a lot of research, we had staff researching different programs or places. I think, feel free to chime in, Ash, but. Our legal authority to do so is tenuous. Uh, and so you could try to craft, you know, a narrow kind of way to do it. You know, maybe if the noise is, noise differential is really significant between gas and electric, justify it on the basis of noise, but I think we, is that?
Yeah, yeah, that's pretty accurate. I think when I spoke with that one, the way her name, um, she made, she she said that, you know, the IGA, the Indiana General Assembly, we really. Um, have their eyes open, be interested in any kind of um regulations uh that the city would put on, um, other people being able to use uh gas powered. Um, lawn garden equipment, I think, especially, you know, even if it's just under noise, I think she mentioned, you know, what what would be the basis for them just. Um, regulating those differently. Um, I think they would still kind of have their eyes out for it. So, um, you know, I think the the question on reemptions kind of tuned you in terms of like. If it's already granted, number one, and number two, is it, if it's not, we would shortly wrap it in a reemption.
Right.
Um, so I kind of, I think the, I think the the safest course is to to kind of um. Make it more voluntary than a than a mandate, um, to encourage uh folks to to choose electric or gas. But when it comes to the territory, you can't do this. Uh, she said that that's the thing, that just like you would likely get involved.
Yeah.
I'm betting you should be too.
And so.
And we charge an additional tax for sales of uh.
Right. I mean, we have no total sales tax authority, yeah. Uh. So where we kind of landed on that was this, you know, it is a, um, first of all, the noise ordinance uh calls out a handful of specific things. That violate the noise ordinance, but it's also framed generally in that uh anything that, you know, uh, has a certain certain level of uh nuisance. Um, can be uh subject to, you know, uh, a requirement to to stop the noise, for lack of a better term. Um, and so arguably, someone running a gas powered leak blower for hours on end is already a violation of our noise noise ordinance. But uh, a handful of residents who have had uh particular frustrations with this uh issue have not had any success in getting the police or anyone else. To try to enforce the noise ordinance against gas powered blowers. So where we kind of settled, and then I was asking Ash additional questions about just this evening before the meeting, is we could have some reasonable time of day. Uh, limitations, uh, which is something that we saw in the in the fields, you know, among others, trying various things, not everybody has an hour ban, some do hour limitations. Um, and we would, we would be technology agnostic uh with respect to the equipment, but it might only apply, for instance, to, you know, uh, blowers, leak blowers. Would probably apply to equally to electric and gas. Um, and, you know. The idea was uh that you could at least give some hours of relief, including maybe no federal holidays, uh, more limited hours on the weekends, like kind of like a. A ten to four, you know, kind of thing, and and recognize Monday to Fridays as the kind of main landscaping business uh. Hours and also um, uh, a time when folks might do work after after a couple of work hours. More like a, you know, eight AM to seven PM or something like that, uh, which of course isn't nobody restricted, but it's um. Uh, the other thing I was just speculating earlier in the meeting uh before the meeting about was if we call out by name, you know. Blowers in the noise ordinance, just like we do with like amplified sound and, you know, things like that. Would that put the executive in a better position to be able to actually enforce the noise ordinance? Because it is something that's specifically cited and called out and therefore less subject to uh a sort of subjective interpretation of what's, uh, you know, what's a nuisance or not. But if we actually make it as something that falls within this ordinance, um, so that's another potential ancillary benefit, I would say speculative, but, you know.
I like that. And I can check on that.
Sure.
I think it's a lot.
Yeah, we can ask uh the administration.
Is the enforcement issue because it's not explicit enough in the ordinance or the enforcement issue is that we just can't get people out there to respond? To noise violations because if we can't get people out there to respond to noise violations. out there to respond to noise violations? Because if we can't get people out there to respond to noise violations, then it kind of feels like it's just going to be another thing that's not enforced at all.
Yeah, I think it's both. Um Dave, feel free to weigh in on this as well, since you've kind of had the conversation about it. Hugh Kramer is a resident in particular that has uh shared his frustration with us on this topic. I think the police have largely said we're we're too busy, this isn't a priority for us, but yeah, was there more they?
Well, he finds that the the uh leaf blowers are particularly offensive. They operate louder and they operate at a higher frequency of noise than uh lawnmowers. And so he's, he he and some of his neighbors were particularly concerned about that. And I think that might be the target. Um because, you know, um I I do think that they're more offensive. I mean, it's just anecdotally, I I think they are. Um so in terms of hours of operation, I was thinking of I I I couldn't quite make out what you said, Matt, but I was thinking nine to five on weekdays and then weekends noon to five, which wouldn't be, I don't think, too onerous because it would allow businesses to operate during weekdays and then on the weekends, you've got a window to do your leaf blowing if you want, but you can't exceed, you know, if people want to do a barbecue at seven PM, you're not having a leaf blower running. Um, you know, that seems to me reasonable, but I'm open to other ideas on this. And by the way, Matt, something I've just, I forgot just to step back a bit, and that is regarding the um the incentive program, would this apply just to residents or would it apply to business as well, do you think? Do you have?
Yeah, we were, yeah, I hope you mentioned that. I think we um were thinking just residents at least as a
Okay, okay, that's fine, that's fine. Um so anyway, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to at least stake a flag on in doing something about the noise ordinance and then maybe tighten it up later as we see how it's received and see how effective it is or whether it's non-effective.
Yeah.
But clearly it's complaint-driven.
Yeah.
But then someone would have to call the police and we'd have to make sure the police are amenable to this, that they're not gonna, you know, it's another thing for them to do and it's probably the least thing that they want to be doing, but but somebody's got to enforce it, so I assume it would be up to them.
Well, if it is during, you know, normal working hours, I wonder if Hans, you know, does those types of reinforcements at all as well. Um we can, that's something for us to explore with city staff. Um I'll add the context, the section of code is, the noise ordinance is fourteen point oh nine point oh three oh, sorry, the uh the, yeah, the title. And so the the generic cover-all purpose is unreasonable noise uh shall mean a sound that is of a volume, frequency, or pattern that prevents, disrupts, injures, or endangers the health, safety, welfare, prosperity, comfort, or proposed reasonable persons or ordinary sensitivity of ordinary sensitivities within the city's home town, given the time of day or environment in which the sound is made. So, you know, reasonable person standard, but uh nevertheless kind of highly subjective. And then, second C says, in addition to the foregoing, the following acts are a violation of this chapter. And that's where they got specific things, um, you know, cited and where we would consider the the possibility of of actually calling out um uh, you know, lawn equipment blowers, I don't know if you call it blowouts.
Give us a citation.
Fourteen point oh nine point oh three oh. I I'm I'm generally in agreement with you, Dave. Uh I think uh I was contemplating maybe slightly wider hour ranges uh to capture folks uh like residents after the workday kind of thing, or you know, maybe a slightly earlier start time of operation for the businesses. Um but I agree, it's the kind of thing that uh we can seek input on and and, you know, tweak a little bit as it gets closer to uh, you know, uh to to consideration.
So was there the proposal to change, to add the the leaf blower to that specific list first and see how that goes, and then consider a timing thing? I feel like I heard somebody else say that, kind of like do one at a time and see if, see what the reception is like.
Well, I imagine that. I'll note that the um, some of these ones that are called out specifically, like amplified noise, uh noise instruments, et cetera, those have an hour, hour of the component. So it's not, you, it's not like any amplified noise at the time, between the hours of nine PM and seven AM. And so it's kind of those two things in combo, uh where I don't know if like adding blow, leaf blowers as a standalone thing without an hourly call-out, like makes sense, because that's actually any use of a leaf blower to annoy someone? But we're not trying to say that, we're trying to say during these hours. And 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 the other piece that the the music one does is like uh for more than fifteen minutes of continuous use or something. And so we did, you know, consider that possibility as well. Um continuous or intermittent use over a certain period. Uh so Ash actually has draft text for this, um which I'm in a position to pull up, but yeah.
This is a very rough draft, but all right, took us down to adding this language.
Matt, how about if I reach out to Hugh Kramer about what he considers reasonable hours? Because he's kind of a canary in the coal mine here.
Indeed. I think I think his answer will be none, but uh, yeah.
Reasonable, reasonable.
Yes, yes.
I guess one thing that I feel like with hours, because it can get so hot in the summer, that I hate for there to not be any hours in a cooler part of the day, even though I also hate it when I'm trying to sit down for dinner or something on my back porch when it's finally a cooler part of the day and and then hear the lawn equipment. So it's kind of a
So I think we were only anticipating blowers here and not lawnmowers, and it's infrequent that those will be used in the summer, uh mainly I think in commercial entities, sometimes you use them to blow grass stuffings. Um, but I mean, fair point, we're going to run into these types of nuanced considerations. Any, any, any hours that try to set you're running with them, but
But I mean, if we're setting like just a time limit, like if people just do like, oh, like can't do more than thirty minutes, that could count, or maybe I was thinking more than five or ten personally.
Never used a leaf blower, so how long does it really take to use a leaf blower? I sometimes feel like I see people pull it out for about thirty seconds, and then they're done.
Yeah, a couple hours if you're clearing your yard of leaves with it, you know, as opposed to
Well, I'm a renter, so I don't know, it's a party.
The problem with the duration is that a cop would have to sit there and wait to see.
Right, right, right.
You know, you'd have to be able to, you know, verify that it's taken, you know, they've been doing it for forty-five minutes or something and I don't know, it gets a little complicated, but I agree with you. I mean, it is excessive. I know people in my neighborhood who love to do these, it's, you know, it's like a hobby. To run these things, you know?
It's a bad hobby.
How do we feel about the language that Ash grabbed? But I feel like it's a pretty good start.
Yeah, thanks, Ash.
Yeah.
And I added the exceptions too. There there's a list of exceptions and I think last year folks were talking, I mean, what about an emergency situation? You know, down a tree or something. I think folks are talking more specifically to chainsaws, but um, you know, other, other emergencies, yes.
Um, leaf blowing emergency chainsaw wasn't.
Um, yeah.
Okay, so um, so you were contemplating, it falls under the category of off-grade gas car equipment technically, but right, well, they decided when it came to this category of um prescriptions, we were going to target blowers as the worst offenders.
Okay.
I should really just say leaf blowers, I don't know. I think people use it for other purposes, that's why. I've sort of taken that, uh, maybe, anyway.
I call it motorized, what's the language?
Yeah, yeah.
Accurate.
You could, you could see what the commercial, like the salespeople call them, because maybe they call them leaf blowers, or maybe
Yeah.
have some more
All right, so, several of those next steps on this one, uh Dave is going to reach out to Hugh Kramer to get uh Hugh's input. Uh, we will work with Ash to maybe kind of finalize some draft language and maybe we review in May in conjunction with our discussion with staff about this. Does that sound okay?
And I think also, I don't know to what extent you're hoping to get uh these noise, um the the noise ordinance change in conjunction with the paid-out timeline specifically for a city using this equipment.
Hmm.
Um, it's actually going to be simple, even one whole sweepwork, two different.
Oh, in terms of that ordinance?
Yeah.
I think we can do it all in a single ordinance and even um, you know, uh the the incentives program for you to recall that, not as a requirement, but as a, you know, we direct staff to explore this possibility in line with climate action, as, you know, why is he? Um, so doing it all in one seems great to me. If if a piece is controversial or extreme, it won't pass together as well, we can just divide the question uh and consider, you know, the section of the ordinance one at a time as needed, but I I think it makes sense to just package it all.
Is that any more of a language than the the others, other aspect of it too?
That'd be great. Yeah, it's all a single transportation and land use cap strategy. I don't think it makes sense to combine if we're, if we're ready to move forward on a roughly similar timeline. So yeah, I'm geared to get this towards finalization over the next couple of months um in place, so thank you all for input and thoughts. Um I think, I think we're all, so I think everybody's good to kind of that three-part framework and we're doing throughout each thing, or right? Okay, great. We will eventually put this alignment strategy to that. Um, okay, it'll never die, but yeah, okay. Uh, so the the final major agenda for tonight is a committee member cap priorities for twenty twenty-four. Uh so we discussed this at a very high level uh in our meeting of the year and we had discussed um uh trying to identify specific uh probably legislative items that that you're just getting moving forward this year. Um, you know, I think ideally maybe this would be tied to directly to the private action plan and be one of the actions, as if it's a sort of overwhelming amount of uh actions that we can't possibly implement. Um and so but you know, if there's a particular, like I know I have a few things that are slightly different than what's exactly contained in the cap, but I think are worthwhile to move forward that are very much private action, and so it's possible other folks do too. So I don't want to include other items, of course, that are not in the cap. Um but, but yeah, I think it's a useful framework. And so um if folks like have specific actions that they want to talk through, uh we could do that. I've got an eye on the time, it's um a little bit on the later side. Do we have it in the public as well, apparently, Ash?
I don't believe there's enough now.
Okay, so we don't really need to worry about public comment too much. I anticipated this as a hour and a half meeting, kind of in the max.
Yeah.
Great. Um and so how how are members feeling? Are we in a position to talk some specific actions and priorities for folks, or do we want to talk a little more generically and move back, maybe asynchronously on identifying the specific actions and your priority? I don't know, I presume.
Right, I mean, it's difficult of the specific actions, I think.
I think I have some things generally that I'm interested in, but I'm not entirely sure what already exists.
Okay, I think it's a good one.
Where um, like, like where to begin?
Yeah.
Say that. So I don't know if this is the right format to have that discussion, um because of maybe keeping it to a couple minutes would be fine, but
Yeah, well, it's a really good point that um we don't quite have the dashboard in place yet. It's set, I I did get an update from Sean uh last month. It's set to launch very soon, uh hopefully before our next meeting, and so that can be part of Sean's uh maybe discussion presentation to us next next month as well. Um so we do have a tracking dashboard that I think will have at least some sort of ability to drill down and look at each action and what's been accomplished or anything. But it's, yeah, you're a great point, I'll be there, like, why would you know what's
Well, right. I'll give you one of the examples under waste management was develop a fiscal impact statement um regarding expanding the organics and recycling program ordinance and so on and so on. What exactly is the organics and recycling program ordinance? I think I can actually, like, find something that's titled quite like that. So it was one of those, like, what exactly is that referring to?
Yeah.
In this plan? And is it something that actually already exists?
Hmm.
And yeah, so Ash, that's a, I see, I see your your eyes lit up with the research. Um but that's one of the things, like, yeah.
Sure. I will say that inevitably, like with a plan like this, with a firm that does these plans for other people, things kind of get sourced sometimes that like we don't have the legal authority to do, or, you know, that that might, yeah, be put in in language that we don't even quite use. And so there's, you know, it's it's not without its flaws like anything. There's, you know, so there's little things here and there like that, but um actually the the gas-powered blowers is a perfect example. They didn't dig into whether we have the legal authority to do that, they just settle in phase-out ordinance, right? Um, so yeah, maybe, maybe uh since we're at about twenty-four the hour, we can keep it at a high level. If folks want to name specific actions, um that's great, or if you find how to describe what it is, that's fine too. And maybe you take, you know, three or four minutes each. Um, is that all right? Okay, that's it, go ahead there.
Um, I would like to just focus on food insecurity, um more specifically identifying where the largest food deserts are in Bloomington and looking into public parks that are nearby, where we can hopefully implement community orchards. Um, I know that's very specific and not necessarily high level, but that's what I'm interested in. And then simultaneously implementing compost programs in those same locations that we talked about how cleanup could be a little bit more difficult, like more stress in the large apartment. And so I figured if we simultaneously go as a combo to do it, hopefully that would clean up a little bit more. Obviously, nothing's perfect, especially in the latest ages, but that is what I would.
Right. Um. Okay. Uh.
I'm going to expand your con, your your concept to uh instead of just community orchards, potentially community garden space as well, because there's community garden space in some places and not in others.
Yeah.
Um.
And would those be free for people to take in your vision?
Well, the community garden program generally works like people have a plot that's theirs, but then they, so I think but see, that's one of those things where I think the person who usually charges for people to have a plot, and that of course could be, you know, flexible, I'll say. I don't know how flexible it could be, um but I guess I would advocate for that same sort of model and just because one of, a big obstacle to a community garden plot could be how long it takes to get there.
Yeah.
Right? So if somebody does not have a community garden plot within a ten-minute bicycle ride or a five-minute bicycle ride or a walk if they don't have a bicycle, you know, or if they have to take the bus and, you know, two-way, yeah. So so putting those in in easy distance from people would be a service uh regardless of of whether we make it accessible for the whole community, at least it's accessible for some people who want to dedicate some time and energy to to working up a creative space.
Did you want to share uh priority areas? Uh, okay.
Um. Well, I'll just stick with with waste manager, management reduction that I talked about last time. So like I said, I looked through that and went, well, what is the organics and recycling program ordinance? Do we actually have one of those? What would that really mean? Um, and I I uh reached out to ask what the state of composting is right now, because I know we've done, as a city, a couple of different composting type things. Um and so I'm waiting for an answer back on, you know, what exactly have we done that I am interested in. Uh, I I think that there's just a lot of space and a lot of room for different programs like that, and whether we end up uh supporting staff or supporting other community efforts or implementing something through uh our own inner programs in terms of uh recycling um and composting. I I just think that there's a lot of potential, potential options for things to do. And like, I know that there's um a private entity, whose name I'm not going to remember, who is working on composting in multifamily complexes right now, that is actually going really well. And yeah, like, I'm not going to remember.
There is um, but is Joe Winnie, uh, right? Is he working with um, or keepers? Or is he working with someone else?
I think he's working on his own, and I think that he's established composting on the sites of places that he is partnering with, I think.
Yeah.
I should have been his partner, but I don't. Yeah, yeah, I've talked to him a couple of times at at different events, and I keep on. But yeah, so it's that idea, like, you know, he's starting to get that established. It's something that's sort of working. There's a couple of places in here where it's, uh, it says things like potentially requiring multifamily to offer things like recycling or composting. Because not having recycling and multifamily is also, I think, kind of problematic to me. And it's, uh, it, it, and, and folks who live in multifamily could take an extra trip and drop off recycling at the end of Monroe County. So waste district recyclers, but that ends up being really high overhead. And so people who are more casual environmentalists are not going to do that. And so just that idea of maybe expanding potential recycling drop-off might, might help. I don't know if that's something that we're actually capable of doing or the county is capable of assisting us with. But that's, that's probably the thing that I'm most interested in. And then the other thing, that, because I know that you mentioned a lot of built environment stuff last time. Um, and you mentioned maybe in an email about, uh, requiring, um, all electric, not like PUDs and things like that, if we are able to, uh, would you also require them to be solar ready? As a piece of that, because that was in here too. I was like, yeah, yeah.
Because that's already incorporated? You're saying we should?
We should incorporate that into whatever it is that you want to do with that piece of, um, that requirement on PUD is like requiring that as far as we possibly can require that in terms of, of being solar ready. Yeah.
Great. Thank you. What I might, uh, suggest in a follow-up, uh, offline after this too is to for us to identify and maybe we can keep a committee of this or spreadsheet of like the actions themselves. And so that we have that for reference. I'm happy to do that again. Maybe some notes are annotated a little bit about progress. Uh, to date, are there other, uh, some priority areas that you wanted to?
Well, yeah, thanks. This is music to my ears, uh, what I've heard. I'm, I've, I've been very interested in composting too. I think that I, I'd like to an update from Sean as to where we are. Um, that would be helpful. And, um, you know, I think it's really, it's important to emphasize that if we back composting and we do, we have some program. I mean, I thought just dispensing composters would be a great idea, but we, we have to do it right. Because it could go terribly wrong if people don't do it right, if you know what I mean. You know, you get vermin. I mean, we had a, we had a rodent, a rat outbreak in our neighborhood because of people improperly composting. They would just leave it open. And, um, so the rat population just exploded. So it's, you know, people could be instructed, you know, how to do it, cap it, make sure there's wire underneath and, you know. I think that's a great idea. Um, I, I'm all for, you know, I know that our, uh, we're getting a new bus facility at some point. I would really like to focus on and keep pushing a, a downtown circulator of some kind. I think that would really be a hit and I think it would cut down on traffic, especially on game day. People could just get around without having to drive everywhere. And, you know, that could be a prototype, just to do it on game day or do it on weekends and see how it works. But I think that that would be something that could be a huge carbon cutting, cutting, proposition. Um, and then I just, I, I guess, you know, I think the orphan in this oftentimes and thinking of carbon reduction is sequestration. So, um, tree planting, planting of pr- prairies, and then if we could wet it with, and it sounds like, you know, my colleagues here would be interested in, because you're, you're interested in food, fruit trees and, and berry bushes and things like that. Low, low maintenance, Hoppy, I mean, the type of like, you know, I mean, we could give out pawpaws or persimmon seedlings or something like that that would require almost no maintenance at all. Uh, or June berries, uh, what is it? I meant?
Amelanchier.
Amelanchier, others says. Which require like no, you know, no spraying, no, no, I mean, if anything, it requires maybe you to beat the birds to the fruit. That's all it requires. That would be great to just give those out to people to plant in the backyards or wherever they want, in front yard, backyards, whatever. Uh, so those, those are some ideas I have, yeah. I'll leave it at that.
Great. Um, do you remember, Dave? Uh, thank you. And do you remember, um, when, when John Powell presented to us at a meeting maybe a month, six weeks ago? I thought there was some question about the circulator. And he mentioned the, maybe the third street, uh, you know, uh, bus rapid transit study that they have underway, that there might be room in that budget. Let's explore that. Do you recall that?
I, I remember him mentioning it, but I don't know the specifics, but you're right. It seemed to be, he seemed to be really high on it. And there was, there was a, a possibility of that, a third street one. Um, but I'm thinking maybe a north-south one too, running up to the stadium and back. And then.
Yeah, I think, so just, um, I think the east, the east-west like, uh, priority network or priority corridor thing is, um, almost like bus rapid transit from Ivy Tech to, you know, four forty-six type of thing. Uh, and I like the idea of north-south, and I think it actually is part of some of the scenario planning in the context of the college of walnut study as like one set of options. Um, but I think the countdown circulator shuttle piece, uh, is, um, complimentary, but distinct, but specifically I thought I remember John saying that, um, basically the, uh, consultant helping them study the third street east-west corridor might be able to build this into their scope, essentially. Does anybody else remember this? I thought, I thought that happened.
No, no, you, you're, yeah, I'm, it's coming back now. Yeah.
I, I wonder if you want to follow up with John Powell about that, basically. I don't even have, uh, since that meeting. And since you mentioned this priority, I, you know, maybe it's well suited to, to follow up.
Yeah, I, I, I will follow up with them. And I had something else, a couple of other tiny things to add.
Sure, yeah.
Just to take us off topic, but, but one is, there's a lot of cities in Europe that are doing fossil fuel bans, advertising bans. And, and they're just, you know, and I don't know if this pertains to us very much, but we could be a city, we might be the first city in the, in the U.S. to, to do this. And I talked to John about it, just to prevent any sort of fossil fuel, uh, companies from advertising, uh, on ci- on city property. And that would be mostly buses. Um, so anyway, it, it, how effectual would be, I don't know, but it would be, we would, we could lead the way and we would be the first city to do it. The other couple of things were, I'm, I'm all for these community gardens. And in fact, I think we have a lot of parks. And all of those parks could have community gardens in them. Could, could, you know, have some area reserved for community gardens and. And I, I think it would be great, great, especially for low-income folks to, um, to have them, have tools rentable, not rentable, but just you can sign them out. And you can also, you can also have seeds available for them. So buy some seeds for various crops. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, the library actually has like a seed library already that they give out seeds for that kind of thing. And I, I think I've seen with other community gardens, they'll have like a shed, they'll have like a community garden shed that, that people would have access to who have a plot in the garden, um, for tools. And also for watering, because watering ends up being like this huge issue, which you've got to make sure that there's a water source for these. And I said, not every park, because I'm specifically thinking about Park Ridge Park, because it's very small and there's not much sun. So it'd be really hard to put garden lots in Park Ridge plot. But you could absolutely put some berry bushes in there. And actually, our neighborhood has been really working hard on invasives around that park. And, and, uh, I think that they would probably be down for some berry bushes somewhere, but yeah.
Lovely.
And I would, and I would be remiss to say, since we were talking about lawn equipment, to see if we could encourage people to replace their lawns with native woodland or prairie.
Yeah.
And, and start shrinking, shrinking it.
Yeah. Yeah, we have allowance for that specifically in our code, uh, that like, you can do that, but yeah, correct. And we have the little signs. I tried to ask once, like, where do those come from? Like living lawn sign, does the city provide those or does somebody else do that? But yeah, like the idea of promoting it, um, more actively.
Thank, thank you for indulging me.
Yeah, of course. Uh, so I can wrap this up here. Um, I'll follow up via email and, um, maybe model what I think we could, could do to, uh, kind of coordinate and just have visibility. I have an absolutely unreasonable list of, um, like twenty-five actions I try to drive over. I know that not all going to happen this year. Maybe it's turning into a, you know, council term that everybody does. But some things that are, that are, um, uh, you know, top of the list for me, first of all, I'm going to email all council members this week or next about, um, the potential for a, a resolution sometime before brief that to direct some incremental changes and tweaks to the unified development ordinance. Uh, so when we do that, it's via a resolution for request of planning commission and staff. We'll go back to us. We did that with like a transform overlay for Oakwell last year.
We have like four coming up for first reading, um.
Oh, yeah.
They're, they're all really.
They're, they're like clerical mostly. Yeah, I tried to coordinate with staff.
Thing that's even sort of.
I even tried to coordinate with staff to like have those all coming at the same time and they were like already done. So I was like, okay. But that's okay, maybe next time. But, um, the way I thought this would go is, I know a variety of folks have ideas. A few that I'd like to run are, um, reducing or limiting parking minimums, uh, looking at, um, PUD requirements for, yeah, EV and solar ready and electrification. Adding to the incentive section, the possibility of EV readiness and electrification. And possibly reducing, uh, lot size minimums to allow, basically where you, where you can build an ADU now, actually allowing subdivision of the lots as a separate smaller lot and it, and it could be a distinct home that's, you know, owned by somebody instead of this rental ownership combo, uh, as a requirement with the, uh, ADUs. So there are like a few examples of things that are all actually contained within, everything except the lot sizes is contained within the climate action plan. The lot size of these is sort of generically included about, you know, uh, general density, uh, in a sense. But, um, the broader point is, I, I think that's coming soon. I'd like to coordinate with all nine council members. Anybody can kind of add something to that resolution. And then we can just, uh, divide the question when we vote on it and figure out what has majority support and direct this package to the, um, to the, the staff and planning commission for updates. So I intend to fold about five or six things into that from the climate action plan. A couple others I'll highlight here are, um, kind of like, uh, capital planning and next phases of the transportation plan. We have a safety update coming our way. But there's also a call for policy integration and climate, uh, assessment around project, uh, scoping and priorities, as well as a call for capital planning to achieve, uh, the, the, the network build-outs we're trying to achieve. And so I've been talking to staff about getting, um, a status update on our priority build network, the six-year plan, we're a year, four and a half. And then also talking about what's the next six-year plan look like? How do we take the next steps to identify the priority projects? And, and build a capital plan for them. So that's actually all contained within the, the climate action plan's, uh, transport chapter and trying to have some accountability and make sure we drive that forward. Um, the other, one other major one is, um, uh, an update in the green building ordinance to include electrification of new facilities. Basically, when we do, do new build, stop connecting to fossil fuels. And then kind of related to that, we have a contract that just got underway, um, for, uh, a citywide facilities assessment for energy efficiency and decarbonization pathways, um, or electrification pathways. So I asked at last year's city budget if we have any, um, plan in place for how to get fossil fuels out of our buildings on the multi-decade timeline. And, you know, there, there wasn't yet, but this is going to help us start to develop that. Again, these are all called for in the cap. So actually having an electric, energy efficiency and electrification master plan for city facilities, uh, retrofits, not just new build. I have a handful of other things. I'll follow up on those via email. Those are some of the biggest ones, I would say, and things I'm trying to work actively on now. So yeah, um, still no one on the public is ready to say anything.
Yeah.
Great. Uh, so if there are any questions or comments on those, I will take them, but otherwise, we are at seven o'clock, about the end of our agenda. Uh, there was, um, just an item of scheduling. I think we're on the first Monday of the month of August. Uh, so we should already be queued up for first Monday in May, May fourth, uh.
It's May sixth.
May sixth, thank you.
That would be the day before primary election day. Odds are I will not be able to be here for my other job. No, it's okay. If everyone else can make it, you can just go on. I promised about me and like Shawnia was planning on being here and, and can't be here on the thirteenth. But if you can move it, that'd be great.
Let's take a look at the thirteenth and if everybody's available, including Sean.
I'm not available on the thirteenth for the plant conference meeting.
Immediately shut down.
Oh, plant conference meeting, I'm sorry. They moved the plant conference meeting, but I don't think that they will.
I'm, I'm a little of the, yeah, it's always such a, you know, cat wrangling exercise.
And might be able to be here over just a, it's unlikely that I could be able to, even though they hold it to be ever.
Well, we can coordinate, um, sharing out notes or any, any, any update, uh, ahead of that. But yeah, okay. Uh, anything else? Before we turn?
So I, I, I didn't get, I didn't understand that. Are we on, are, are we on for the sixth?
We're on for the sixth.
On for the sixth. Maybe not all of us, but most of us.
We briefly stood an alternative and immediately shut down, so.
That's what I thought. Okay, just making sure. I'm good with that.
Yeah, thank you for joining us, Dave, and I hope you feel better soon.
Thanks. I got my L-butyrone. I have my antibiotics, so.
Excellent.
I'm you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Uh, we are adjourned.